Calling the order. Have a invocation, do you mean?
Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for our opportunity to do business for your community. We thank you for leaders. Thank you for all of those that serve as great people. Bless this meeting, Lord, be glorified by all we do and say, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to be agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Hash, second by Commissioner Lambert's to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor? All of those same sign, motion passes? Moving on to public comments. This is the time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you come to the podium, state your name and address, speak respectfully, and limit your comments to three minutes. The commission will listen and consider your comments, but no immediate action will be taken at this time. Comments on the condemnation resolutions will happen during the public hearing process. Is anyone here from the public that would like to make a comment? Moving on.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I will keep track of time for you, okay?
Yeah, my name is Jody Rockfish. I live at 111 West 10. I would like you to know that I'm not here to criticize any housing situation that is less desirable than my own. I do however believe there is a point when a structure is past its ability to safely house anyone. I live in a home across the street from 128 West 10, so I have some knowledge of the condition. While the outside looks like many others in the neighborhood, the inside is quite a different story. I've worked with the most recent family who owned it since Karen, the current owner's daughter, was an infant. I was so excited to hear when Karen's mother, Joanne, inherited the house from her sister-in-law. When she was working hard to keep their family together, but when Joanne passed away, her daughters were left the house. They both faced challenges and their mother voiced worry that they couldn't handle the property. We have shared with them, lent them money, tried to give healthy advice to them. A little more than 10 years ago, we added on to our house. One daughter asked our contractor to work on their bathroom. He made a quick trip over and upon return voiced that it was too far gone for him to be interested in the job. Several years later, the same thing happened when we had an HVAC plumber at our house. He told us that nothing in their bathroom or kitchen, including the floor, was salvageable and he wouldn't even step foot in it. He stated that it was unusable. The last time I was in the house was about five years ago. The smell was horrendous even from the living room. I was so glad when the one daughter and granddaughter were told they needed to move to low-income housing. I've been relieved when animal control has come to remove dozens of cats and multiple dogs from the house more than once. I'm concerned about the increased rodent and roach problem in our neighborhood. Although that remains a troubling reality for those of us who live nearby, I'm here because Joanne would not want any friend or family member to consider living in such deplorable conditions. No human should. The house is too far gone. No amount of rehab money can remove the urine and feces soaked floor twice. The neighbors would respect what we ask, but it may turn out.
Thank you for coming.
But we'll see if you're in.
128 West. Moving on to proclamations. The proclamation is the Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, and Judy Willoughby will be giving the proclamation this evening.
I will, and I know you have probably some of these cards and vouchers, but I'll be giving more information so you can share all the information with everybody. Sure. So I've been with you back about 11 plus years now. We're a nonprofit, one of your many in Concordia, and raising awareness today for teens in the youth of our our area. So this is the Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month proclamation for February 2025. Whereas one in three adolescents in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional, or verbal abuse from the dating partner, a figure that far exceeds victimization rates for other types of violence affecting youth. And whereas one in 10 high school students have been purposely hit, slapped physically or emotionally abused by a dating partner, and whereas high school students who experience physical violence in dating relationships are more likely to use drugs and alcohol and are at a greater risk of suicide and are much more likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships. And whereas young people victimized by a dating partner are more likely to engage in risky sexual behavior and unhealthy dieting behaviors, and the experience may disrupt normal development of self-esteem and body image. And whereas nearly half of teens who experience dating violence report that incidents of abuse took place in a school building or on the school grounds. And whereas only 9% of teens who are in an abusive relationship ever tell anyone about abuse. And 81% of parents surveyed either believe teen dating violence is not an issue or admit they do not know if there is one. And whereas by providing young people, parents, and professionals with education about healthy relationships, warning signs of abuse, and relationship skills, and by changing attitudes that support violence, we recognize that dating violence can be prevented. And whereas the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas needs all of the county citizens to work towards ending teen dating violence by empowering young people to develop healthier relationships, assisting victims in assessing the information and supportive services they need, creating more resources for young people in need, instituting effective intervention and prevention policies in schools, and engaging in discussion with family members and peers and promote awareness and prevention of a quiet epidemic of teen dating violence. And now therefore, the City of Concordia Board of Commissioners here designate February 2025 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, and urge citizens to recognize and assist all of those who serve in the rights and needs of victims of teen dating violence.
Are we signing a copy?
Yeah.
Thank you, Julie, for coming on.
I didn't know if you could move on it or anything, so. Okay, alright, so just signed up for one with data, that'd be great.
Do you give literature to the school?
We do. We actually emailed all the school counselors today. Do you need to take a copy of this? I mean, you can have one of them.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will open the public hearing for the condemnation properties.
Our mayor, commissioners, thank you. Before we take public comments, I'd like to enter into the record. The public hearing notice that was published twice. Blade Empire on December 12th and December 19th. And it established that today would be the public hearing in 5:00. And with that, will take any comments from the public? I ask that we're only going to have one public hearing, so we'll take, when you come up through comment, please state the address of the house. What we're probably talking about.
For being out of order.
And also, I'd like, as we adopt these resolutions, I'd like to make a couple of statements about a couple of them because I've been asked to by the representatives on a couple of them. So giving progress reports, basically the last week before this, a lot of, a lot of conversation that happened.
Okay. So, should we move through each property and, or just allow the public to say?
Wait and see. If there's no more, if there's no public comments, then we can proceed to public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Thorson, would you like to make a statement?
Should I do it now or when we get?
Okay, yes. Mr. Thorson is the owner of the tall elevator at 333 State Street.
I will keep time.
And please to say he's not a thief.
Yeah, I went into the office yesterday when I was deceased.
I was limited to three minutes on it.
Yes, I'll give time for you, sir.
Okay. My wife and I own the elevator. Our intention is to dismantle that elevator and sell, we would sell all of the tin off of it. We've got 25 different people that have expressed interest in that. We intended to start this almost two years ago when I brought that big machine up there, the High Lift. We also own a motel in Smith Center, and during this period of time, we lost the roof two times. Once within one, one year apart, it took the whole top of the roof off on the top balcony cover. And then we were involved with the big hailstorm last May. So we have buildings in Smith County, Jewel County, Cloud County, Mitchell County, and Osborne County, and we had to deal with all that stuff. But now it's basically all done. So we're getting ready to do this. The intention is to take the small building down first and remove it and remove some of the debris from the front of the building. And then I have a crane that's going to come in and we're going to take the other building down in pieces. It's going to take maybe six months altogether, just because we have to take it down, take the pieces apart, put them in the warehouse. We're going to maintain and keep the warehouse that is next to the tall elevator. Take the chimney tops and things like that off of there and put regular tin on the roof. And in the meantime, prior to this, I covered the building up so that the only way you're going to get in there is with a chainsaw and a wrecking bar or something right now, so unless you're smaller than a cat. So I think we've stopped the entry of people because I got a call by the Florida Police a couple of times, and there was people that were in there trying to stay in there. And we shuffled them out of there by my request, so, but that's our intention, so I just want to let everyone know. I would, the machine that's sitting over there costs twice as much as the building, so I wouldn't have brought in this if I didn't have good intention. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Becky Cardenas, and I own 414 East 2nd. And we are actually in the process of remodeling inside the house. I can bring pictures of everything. We have all the equipment, everything inside the house sitting there. I just don't, I'm not understanding why the, it wants to be demoed.
I'm sorry?
414 2nd?
Mm-hmm, I understand now. What's your question?
Why it needs to be demoed or whatever?
It, it's in the process of condemnation.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is the first time I've been here, I don't know.
Whether it needs to be demoed or not, there's yet to be determined.
Okay. But yeah, we've got new windows put in, a new front door. We got bits of wood, we've got done on the inside chandelier, kitchen, the ceiling's going up as we speak. It's a new, new door. I don't know what else. I've never done this before, so I don't know.
Okay, so, so you're gonna have it happenable again, is what you're saying?
Correct, yeah.
And this works, being done by, do you live there?
No, we live on 5th Street. It's being done by Louis, which he's a foreman, and that's where we're doing.
Right, without a permit.
Well, there's, actually, actually, they told us we didn't because we're not actually construction.
Who's that?
Um, the state? Somebody from the state. I don't know who he talked to, but it just.
The city requires a permit for.
If you, if you redo it, but we're just replacing. Okay. We've got some people, so we can get it again.
You need to get a permit.
Okay.
And that will be part of this condemnation process so that we can monitor and make sure you're going to get it.
To do it directly. Okay, that's, yeah, that's fine. But we took out all the trees in the backyard, took out all the fallen trees, everything. Got pictures of that one. I just don't know what else to do.
You want to be, that to be in the record?
Yes.
This, okay?
Yes, that would be great.
We'll, we'll have to make copies.
Okay. And then I also have that one there.
Yeah, put that, what's that?
Well, this is a different property.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay, you want me to read that or you want?
Go ahead, you can.
Okay, we have, uh, this is for 829 East 5th. I want Anita Gonzalez to give Rebecca Cardenas permission to speak for tonight at the county commission meeting about the house at 829 East 5th. 2525, I want to get that down, I'm going to pass that around and you need that. So you want to speak for that, too?
Well, um, we want to tear it down. It was, and Louis said to, that Dallas is going to help them and they won't get.
Okay, all you have to do is get a demo permit.
Okay, that's it, then, okay. Yeah, that's all we want to do is tear that one down.
That'd be good.
Yeah. Nope, that's it, I guess.
Can I have a quick question? Yes, what's your intention with 414 2nd? You said you don't live there and you're fixing it up, what's the intent?
My daughter's going to move there. You would this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just hang on to all of them and then.
Anything else? Not any progress of hearing, you start the resolution.
Public hearing, it is now closed. Move on to Resolution 2025-2184, condemnation of 111 State Street.
For my memo, I'd like to make comment on some of these because I've been contacted by the owners and permit on, this one here, on the very first one, 111 State, Mr. Tate, who contacted me a couple of times in the last couple of days. He's got a demo permit for the garage. He's cleaned up a lot of, he's in the progress. He's put a $10,000 roof on the building. He's got lined up to replace some logs. That's actually a log cabin. And he's determined to get that fixed up, so he's in the process now. So we can just go ahead and adopt that with several days, and I'll make sure that he gets a proper permit when he needs to because he knows he's got to get licensed electrician and plumbers in there to do some work, so. And we've been in communication. So that one, we can just adopt as, as is. I just wanted to update you on.
So are we going to do these one by one?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to, alright.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-2184.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Hash, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve Resolution 2025-2184. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign, motion passes. Okay, moving to Resolution 2025-2185, condemnation of 128 West 10.
This one is, the owner is under Adult Protective Services. I've been in contact with them several times. As you know, we've gotten, we've gotten a comment tonight. I've been in the building, you've seen pictures of the building. I really can't speak to the structural soundness of the building at this point from my level. I have had comments about it until I can get in there and I don't know, I think according to Mr. Hale, who's here tonight, he has, it is, it is to the point where you can go in it. So they are in the process of cleaning it up, and once we can go in there and make a determination, and hopefully I can do that without resistance and having to get an administrative search warrant or something like that, but we, I think we can, and then I can make a determination on the structure, whether it needs to come down or it can be repaired. And I would say just stay the same with this one. Any questions?
Is that one being lived in currently?
It is not. It is not. The owner can't make any, the decision, no decision can be made on this property by the owner until it's, until the temporary person in charge of her account is, in her case, is assigning, assigns a permanent person for her case, and then decisions can be made about what happens and how that, how things go with her affairs. But that still doesn't, that still doesn't work our process.
Sounds like we need to go ahead and approve this as well. I move to approve Resolution 2025-2185.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Hash, second by Commissioner Lambert's to approve Resolution 2025-2185. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign, motion passes. Resolution 2025-2186, condemnation of 202 Broadway.
On that, this one I expect to put out the bid.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-2186.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hash to approve Resolution 2025-2186. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Resolution 2025-2187, condemnation of 315 West 11th Street.
This one we can go ahead and approve as is, and then later we'll have a demo program application for this one. The owner has put in, we ran that into your agenda late.
I move to approve Resolution 25, 2025-2187.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve Resolution 2025-2187. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Condemnation of 325 East 12th Street.
This one, as is, I expect this one to go to bid.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-2188.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to approve Resolution 2025-2188. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Uh, Resolution 2025-2189, condemnation of 333 State Street.
Mr. Thornton, do you want 30 days to get a demo permit on Mr. Stark?
That would be good, probably, because of the weather and stuff, I think that's probably not.
Okay. So I'd request that he put 30 days, adopt it with the 30 days to start the process.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-2189 with the amendment of an additional 30 days to obtain a demolition permit. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hash, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve Resolution 2025-2189 with 30 days to get a permit. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Condemnation, oh, sorry, Resolution 2025-2190, condemnation of 414 East 2nd Street.
This one here, I would recommend 30 days to get a building permit. On this one also.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-2190 with the addition of the amendment of 30 days to secure.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve Resolution 2025-2190 with the 30 day 30 days to obtain a building permit. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Resolution 2025-2191, condemnation of 421 West 14th Street.
And as I expect this one to go to bid.
And as you're saying, bid, like for a demolition bid?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, I just.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-2191.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hash to approve Resolution 2025-2191. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign, motion passes. Resolution 2025-2192, condemnation of 424 West 5th Street.
This one here, the owner's contacted me in the last couple of days. We talked, he's got all the outside cleaned up, fixed the the problems that there was happening on the outside. He's working on the inside. I told him after this, we'd still adopt it, and then I would give progress. There's nothing that this one requires unless it does turn out to be structurally unsound, but this one was also one that could be could be saved with a good cleanup and a, and to take care of the infestation, and that's ongoing. So the only thing I could promise on this one is that I will monitor and make sure because of the resolution, it has to be diligently pursued until it comes, so he's got to make that happen. And that's by getting it sanitary and deinfested, so we'll see how that goes, but at some point, if he's not diligently pursuing it anymore, I'm guessing he wants to get it cleaned up and run it out of there.
We put a a timeline for that to help with the process?
I don't know that you can put a timeline, one's got to be finished. You can ask, I don't know if we can amend it to have regular reports, that's just something we can ask me at a meeting, I suppose, I, do we need to do something right for that?
No, not certainly.
Put it in a resolution so that the owner knows that we're going to be making sure and pushing that that's what the ordinance is written for, that it's diligently pursued. He'll get a certified copy of that.
Just send that to them and tell them to keep up and keep the progress.
I think he understands, he's, he's he understands, I'm very, very serious about it. Hopefully. So yeah, I just adopt this one as is, and I'll just try to keep you updated on it. I'll make notes every, if you see what we're writing down. If I haven't heard, I'll say I haven't heard, but.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-2192.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hash to approve Resolution 2025-2192. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign, motion passes. Resolution 2025-2193, condemnation of 425 East 6th Street.
As you know, on this one, you have, you received an email through, Amy, I believe, a request for a 90-day to get their fairing order on this one. They've had some issues, personal issues, so they were, they have requested more time. It's totally up to you what you want to give, and.
When did, when were these notices published again? It was like in December, twice.
Or 12?
So two months ago. So two months ago.
It's basically you have to advertise twice a week apart and you have to wait thirty days before you can open.
Okay.
So thirty days plus whatever it was between now and the thirty day deadline and then whatever it was between that.
Okay, so they already had two months' notice.
Yeah, Commissioners, I mean, then, yeah, you, you guys set the date for the public hearing for this and then they get the notice shortly thereafter.
And it, from the communication that we received, it sounds like they've got plans for that. Is there really a need to, it's, offer an extension?
Well, he's, he's cleaning it up now. He's, he's cleared all the trees off of the property. Uh, like they said in the memo, they, they have plans to do. There are two houses on that property. Once this is adopted, then I have the power to go in there and we just go for work and if they can't meet that scope of work, it'll be just like the one in First Street. And whether you give them thirty, sixty or ninety days, it doesn't matter if they don't meet that plan of deadline.
It just seems like with this particular person, we've had ongoing issues like this before and I, I'm getting tired of having the same thing come up. So.
And as you said, Bruno, if, if, if the plans that were shared are acted upon, then this, this resolution isn't. It, it'll, it'll address the issue, right? And there's, there's not necessarily.
That's the way it's designed, yes.
So.
And with the last one, the issue wasn't addressed by, you know, the burden of the president.
And there's no current building permit that's been applied for, for this.
Not yet, no. That's why they're asking for more time. And, and he did call me and show me, I mean, and I've been keeping progress on it and it's, uh, and the trees and the brush and uncontrolled growth have been cleaned up pretty darn good.
So there's, there's time that's naturally built into this process where an extension wouldn't necessarily be wouldn't, wouldn't add any value to the process, right? I mean, like there's.
Just give them time to, uh, get their fairing order as far as line up contractors and that sort of thing. If they're looking to, uh, fix it up and make it happen.
I would think no more than thirty days.
Yeah, we weren't given thirty days to somebody, so maybe that would be the prudent.
Or in the interim, it's in the process.
Do I need to have a contractor identified to, to get a building permit?
Correct. That's one of the issues we have with the last building permit application that was submitted.
So it's a family member that's identified in the letter that we received that was going to be doing the scope of work, their contractor.
If you noticed the wording, it didn't say that they were going to be doing the work that required the license. They just said that they will be doing some of the cleanup work and some of the labor work.
Yeah.
They didn't say they would be doing any construction or electrical or plumbing or mechanical. I thought that was very cleverly worded.
I think a thirty day.
Oh, thirty days.
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
I would move to approve resolution twenty twenty five twenty one ninety three with the amended amendment of thirty day time period.
Second.
Clearly are we, on, on the other ones as, um, to obtain a building permit like under thirty days?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And who, who's her second? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Actually, okay. Uh, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty five twenty one, no, sorry. We have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hutchison to approve resolution twenty twenty five twenty one ninety three um, with thirty days to obtain a building permit. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Resolution twenty twenty five twenty one ninety four condemnation of seven twelve East Tenth Street.
No changes there. I expect this one to go.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty one ninety four.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Lambert to approve resolution twenty twenty five twenty one ninety four. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Resolution twenty twenty five twenty one ninety five condemnation of seven sixteen West Seventh Street.
Well, this one, uh, this one we're holding, uh, fire proceeds. So we had to set the public hearing date before forty-five days from the day we received that check. This one has been purchased by private buyers and intends to, uh, get the contracts lined up and get it, and he was supposed to have something to me by now. I haven't heard a thing from him. I would recommend giving him thirty days to get a building permit placed and start that process just like everything else and then he'll, he'll do it.
I'd move to approve resolution twenty twenty five twenty one ninety five amended, uh, to secure a building permit within thirty days.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hatch to approve resolution twenty twenty five twenty one ninety five with thirty days to obtain a building permit. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Resolution twenty twenty five twenty one ninety six condemnation of eight twenty nine East Fifth Street.
This is one thirty days to get a demolition permit placed. Okay. We'll make that a determination, thirty, thirty days to get a demo permit placed for this one.
I'd move to approve resolution twenty twenty five twenty one ninety six with the amendment to secure a building permit within thirty days.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hatch to approve resolution twenty twenty five twenty one ninety six uh, with a demo permit being obtained within thirty days. All, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Resolution twenty twenty five twenty one ninety seven condemnation of thirteen oh one Lincoln.
On this one, I talked to the franchise, the owner of the franchise that's responsible for that building from, Ramire Patrol, him is actual owner. And he would like thirty days if required to get a permit to fix that, uh, structural damage on the canopy that's done. And he's trying to find material now and, and work that out. He's replaced the, uh, glass that was broken out of it. It was boarded up. And there needs to be a little bit of concrete work done outside, but he's agreed that after today, I'm supposed to contact him and he's agreed to come on and meet with me and walk through that building, but he didn't understand the freezer on the, the cooler on the side of the buildings and the uncontrolled growth around that had damaged it to where it's leaking and I'm sure there's mold in the building and things. So he's got more to do, I think, than he understands, but I'd like you to put thirty days on that to get a building permit placed and then I'll keep you posted on that one too. After I meet with him.
I've moved to approve resolution twenty twenty five twenty one ninety seven amended to, uh, securing a building permit within thirty days.
Okay.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hutchison to approve resolution twenty twenty five twenty one ninety seven amended to obtain a building permit within thirty days. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next is the minutes of the January twenty fifteen, twenty twenty five meeting.
I move to approve that minutes of the January fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hatch to approve the minutes of January fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Appropriation ordinance number two.
I'd move to approve appropriate appropriation ordinance number two.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner, Hutchison, second by Commissioner Lambert to approve appropriation ordinance number two. Any further discussion?
I had a question. On the utility service for the east tower and the west tower. What it said for exactly?
That's the annual agreement where they maintain our water towers, but I guess, you know.
What she said. It, it's maintenance.
Oh, the maintenance.
Yeah.
And then repaints them every.
Right, so we pay them a yearly fee of, right now the one is fifty. We're just going to drop to twenty six and the other one's twenty six thousand, thereabouts.
Yeah.
So we pay that yearly for each tower. And when it's time to get a new paint job, we don't have to pay anything.
Oh, okay.
Paint job is probably over three hundred thousand now.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and they inspect it every year. They send rovers down and to check the insides every year, so everything's taken care of.
Thank you.
So for appropriation ordinance number two, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Okay, and we have a demo application for two twenty six and two thirty two East Fifth Street.
This is the application by Our Lady of the Petri Alt Church Catholic Church. This has been an ongoing saga for me for, since I came here, whether they're going to fix it up, tear it down, pick it up, tear it down, they decided, I guess, to take it down and they like to, uh, I've actually talked to their representative, Jerry Estes, who has talked about, uh, they would like to redo the parking and perhaps, uh, set it up for a future education building, smaller building on that lot. So I would recommend, it qualifies, uh, one part that was added on, the newer part was done in their mid-sixties. And it's below level. They've debated the issue. I've met many contractors over the years and I guess they've decided that it's more economically feasible for them to take the old building down and consider a new building in the future. And to, uh, upgrade their parking and to try to fix that old building.
I move to accept two twenty six and two thirty two East Fifth into the demo program and authorize the city manager to sign the contract with the owner based on the lowest bid of one hundred and twenty one thousand dollars. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Wentz to accept, uh, two twenty six and two thirty two East Fifth into the demo program. And authorize the city manager to sign the contract with the owner based on the lowest bid of twenty one, or one hundred and twenty one thousand dollars. Any further discussion?
Point of clarification, is there a potential conflict of interest if someone is a member of that church or movement?
It's only if they're going to financially gain from the decision. You're not on the governing board or anything, are you? You're just a member of, yeah.
And also to clarify, the max amount that can be received from the demo fund is four thousand dollars. So that would be, if approved, the four thousand dollars would be the amount that would be contributed to this particular budget.
Once they complete construction and show proof of hauling that required, according to law, you know, hauling required construction, we're showing receipts from the county uh, transfer station or, and, or construction debris bit and then, uh, you know, the rubble can go anywhere. It can go into a wash to help erode it and things like that. That's all legal, clean rubble. And that's how they save money. That's how the demo contract saves money is hauling that stuff to, you know, eroded areas and creeks and things. Yeah, that's the maximum amount we allow now.
All right. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. All opposed? Same. Motion passes. Demo application for three fifteen West Eleventh Street.
This is the one that we approved here, uh, the resolution of twenty one eighty seven. And the pollution had replied, he sent me, kindly sent me, or she, I'm sorry, uh, the owner, uh, sent me the application a week ago, but I never got it, never saw it, but anyway, we got this one late. And it qualifies because some, you know, we've just condemned it. So this will help with city expenses to help our own program. We get thirty eight eighty five now if everything goes through. There's actually two houses on this property too. Well, that's actually a pretty good deal. They both have basements in them.
And that both of them will be demoed for this project?
Yes, it's going to be a clean lock. And there's, uh, there's some pretty good uncontrolled growth there too, and there's a tree. I don't know if you are familiar with this one, but it's, uh, right across the street from about the concession stand for the swimming pools and it's that limestone retaining wall that is the only one, it's the best looking retaining wall on the whole block. But when you walk up them steps, the tree, the tree limbs hit you in the head and they're dead and there's dead branches all over. So that'll be, that'll be part of the scope of work when we do the demo. Permit.
But the retaining wall will stay in place?
No, the retaining won't stay there. There's no reason to take that thing down.
And the stairs.
The foundation. This, this person called me when they bought it because, before they bought it, because the intent was to get it on the demo program and to build a new house there and she just fell in love with that retaining wall that then COVID hit. And then it all went away. And then I called a couple of times, never got a response, so then I condemned it. And I got a response.
And it's an out of town, oh.
Yes, uh, Washington state, I believe, yeah.
I appreciate the fact that they're willing to, or.
Yeah, and she, I believe she told me she had family here or something.
I move to accept three fifteen West Eleventh into the demo program and authorize the city manager to sign the contract with the owner based on the lowest bid of seven thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Wentz to accept three fifteen West Tenth into the demo program. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to the discussion agenda. Items deserving a brief discussion, action may be taken. Ordinance for parking prohibited in residential yards. For Commissioners, this is a result of the discussion that you recently had, study session regarding property maintenance. And one of the things that was discussed is how do we prevent people from parking in their front yards, the grassy area or dirt. We're not talking about, um, improved surfaces, which is grassy area dirt that would not normally be used for parking. So the language of this draft ordinance is based on one that was passed by the city of Pittsburgh last March, and it also incorporates some language from Garden City. And then we've modified some of it to benefit our means here as well. So walking our way through it, we described, um, that it's parking of motor vehicles or trailers and the intent there was to encompass anything that could be considered a trailer or a motor vehicle. Um, that it should be allowed, would not be allowed to be parked on any lawn, grass or landscaped or other area of residential yard unless it has a surface of granular, granulated material, asphalt, concrete, brick cover or decorative stone that's been approved by the city building inspector or the city engineer. The idea is that we can't just have somebody that would go in, sprinkle some gravel and say might have a granular surface that can park here. We want that surface to be um, based on whatever city standard we decide is, is good for an improved parking surface. Um, and, and then we also expect the regular maintenance to be done by the property owner or tenant. So again, here the thought process is if somebody decides to do a granular surface area, they need to keep it free from weeds. So for example, if they put a granular surface down, it's approved. They park their RV on the side of their house, for example. Um, in July, we don't expect to see weeds growing up three foot tall around that RV. We would expect it to be maintained, kept free of weeds. Um, in December, January, February, we don't expect to see puddles and ruts from having been sat there for quite some time. It needs to be maintained in a, in a proper way. This would be followed or, uh, code enforcement responsibility to enforce, which is the same as many of our other nuisances, um, or they can designate somebody. So if we need additional assistance, um, they would call additional assistance from law enforcement like they do now for, for difficult nuisances, but generally it would fall primarily to code enforcement. Um, there are exceptions, so we have them listed here. If there's an emergency vehicle being used during an emergency, so if for some reason an ambulance or a fire truck, for example, needed to get closer to the property than the street, then, then they could jump the curve and be up there on the grassy area. There's two other exceptions, um, when moving to or from residence, same thing, if they need a trailer or a box truck or something or a pickup truck. There's two other exceptions, um, when moving to or from residence, same thing, if they need a trailer or a box truck or something, or a pickup truck. Hold closer to the house to be able to move equipment or appliances out. Um, they can do that for a, a limited amount of time. Um, also during construction, if they need to park a trailer up on the yard for, for during construction. Um, I do have language in here saying that exceptions two and three, so moving or construction would require, uh, pre-inspection. From a code enforcement official to give them permission in advance. Obviously, emergency vehicles are not gonna get permission in advance because it's an emergency situation. There are penalties associated with this, and the idea is that this would be a citation that would, that would then run through municipal court. Similar to what we did with tall grass and weeds last year, where we cite people and then it runs through municipal court if they're not, um, compliant. And so the fines for the first violation would, would range anywhere between twenty-five and a hundred dollars, depending on the discretion of the code enforcement official. Anything beyond the first offense would be a, a fine of anywhere of a hundred to five hundred dollars, and then court costs would be added on top of that. We talked about this briefly during department head meeting, um, and kind of discussed some of the language. And decided that we probably need some clarification about access to the parking area. So initially, we were saying, okay, they need to formalize a curb cut to have access to that area. We want to prevent people from just hopping a curb and creating ruts through the lawn to get to the improved surface. Recognizing that there are a lot of areas in our community, especially those that come off a back alley, or even in some areas, the streets that don't have curbing gutter. That requiring a curb cut doesn't make sense, so I'm not sure what that language needs to look like. But did one get your perspective on if we need to include language that there needs to be a formal entry or path? To the parking area as opposed to just being a parking area and hopping a curb and driving through the lawn. Any thoughts on that?
Um, initially, my thought would be that, that where a curb exists, a curb cut would be necessary, uh, for that approach.
Agreed.
The only exception to that. Uh, would maybe, you know, when people are just expanding, like if you already have a driveway and you're adding rock next to that, you can still use the same approach. To get into that, yes, I mean, that would be, yeah, they're leading an established path to get into it, yeah, right.
Or, or something that would help, uh, in addition that, that no lawn would. The, the parking service must be contiguous, I mean, something along those lines to where there's not, not that gap that would be crossed. And that would include being able to have the. Granulated surface, whatever surface adjacent to the existing. And we have two parking areas and ours and one, I mean. You pull off the one for the other.
Well, this. So, that, that includes backyards. I did, I did in my research notice some communities just do front and side yards and don't include the backyard. And some communities do include the backyard.
So this is intentionally written, um, with broad language to include all the yard. So if, if you choose to park in your yard, it should be in an improved surface, it's what this word is saying.
What if you don't have a house and you're, you just have a lot? I guess, if my, I, as I was driving around looking at a lot of the condemnations, I also took note of, there is a tremendous amount of parking. Um, and, and likely, and some because of lack of space, but just parked, you know, trailers, campers, boats and lots. Um, or in backyards or in, like, that, I mean, it's gonna be a lot to combat, I guess, is what I'm saying, that's. It's very prevalent, but there are some lots that just have trailers, so.
So we wrote this, again, intentionally to say a residential yard. So even though it doesn't have a house on it, a residential yard can be interpreted that if it's residentially zoned, if it had a house on it at one point in time, then it's a residential yard. If it's, um, a commercial or industrial zone, I'm not addressing that, we have to look at that.
So any of them letters, um, if you, if you're in a industrial or commercial zone, even if it is a residence. Are they potentially exempt?
That's not something I had thought about, that's something we need to look at too. So you're saying if it's industrial or commercially zoned, but it has a home on it.
Some structure being utilized as a residence.
So we need to clarify that then, this, then my definition of residential yard would not work.
Make the exception, but it's a question, that's true. That's the way it's working in the zoning rules, so. It may be zone residential, but there may be a residential use in place and then a code, then the requirement would kick in depending on. The requirement.
So, so instead of saying like residential yards, it would be in, in yards of residential use or residential zoned property, is that what you would suggest?
I can show you, well, there's a few places in the zoning regs that, that uses that term. Residential zoning or residential use in place or zoning that allows a residential use. Cause some residential, for some zoning, that's not residential, allows residential use. So, you know, there's.
Your question for commercially zoned property that has a home on it, that is being used as residence. I think this morning we also discussed the clarification on enforcement for vehicles that were parked in the right of way versus vehicles that were parked on private property. So this is written in the, to be included, like, to be treated as a nuisance, which would be on private property. For vehicles that are parked in the right of way, we've got some different rules that law enforcement can have. And so I think that the gray area that, that we'd like to be able to clarify a little bit better is. In many areas of our community, we have a street, formal street property with the right of way with extends beyond that, um, generally to the sidewalk. Sometimes there's a grassy area between, so if a car is parked off the street pavement, but on the grassy area between the street and the sidewalk. It's still within the right of way, so then, Brett, do you wanna speak to that now, or do we wanna incorporate some language to help clarify that?
I can speak a little bit, but like, what we're asking is, is, you know, from the sidewalk to the street. Then it's forcible because it's not private property, anything that is beyond the sidewalk to the house is considered private property. Where the zoning and the ordinances would have to kick in versus from the sidewalk to the street, then it falls under, um, the standard traffic laws.
So you can, you can ticket somebody in, and if they don't move their vehicle from the right of way within three days, then you can have it towed.
That, that's correct.
Right.
So, so we need clarification for that, or is that?
I guess that, that, that's my question for you guys, do, do we need clarification, this is the way that it, it, we would enforce it. Is if it's in the right of way, we're gonna look to PD to help with this, if it's not, if it's on private property, then this would govern.
I believe so.
The only way that it's in the right of way is if you happen to have a sidewalk in your yard. It is, I know, but I mean, no one else is gonna. It does not matter to anyone else except for if you have a driveway. Or, I'm sorry, a sidewalk in your front yard, and then, which, I mean, I've experienced that where you're like, um, on the way to the pool. There's a sidewalk, and if you're riding your bike, you can't take the sidewalk safely because there's cars parked on the sidewalk. I do see that there's a hindrance there, that's, I mean, for kids to be able to travel that way, especially in, around those locations.
So, so one of the biggest, there, I don't say the biggest area, some of the problems we run into is like when you get down and around First and Second Street where the gravel road. They, they'll pull the car clerk up to the sidewalk, well, technically, is that still considered the roadway, or is that? Or the yard, and, and that gets into the question, is it a private property, or is it? So there's a little bit of a gray area in there, so, so we always consider anything past from the sidewalk to the, the street still.
Yeah.
Public. Right, right away, sorry.
If it's, if it's problematic, then I think we address it. On the right of way, or we address it from a nuisance standard. I mean, like, that, that would be, we have different avenues that we could address that, at, at the point which is problematic. And so. At, at the least, then it's an educational opportunity, and if I, now that I know that, I'll, I'll take care of that, or if it becomes problematic, then that. Gives some guidance, then we address it from a problematic standpoint.
Is that happening so that there's adequate? Ability to travel on the road, I mean, or just, I mean, why, why park in the right of way there?
Some of them start to make it their own driveway, if you want to say.
Okay.
It's like, one of the biggest issues is. We had, I think it was, it's on Seventy Street, I don't remember the hundred block, but a car that was jacked up and had blocks on it and then tired of taking off. The whole. Argument was, is how, does that fall under private property, or did it fall under the right of way, because there was no sidewalk there? So we didn't know how far back the easement went. You see, I'm, just, maybe you can weigh in on this a little bit.
That's the whole situation of, well, if there's no sidewalk, probably what I would default to is treating it.
Yes.
As we have in this resolution, because really and truly, uh, like Commissioner Jackson said, there's really not. It's not an issue, it's not really technically a right of way, cause there's no, uh, sidewalk mark and that's our, starting and stopping it. So we're, would probably be addressed in there that, that this is just, you're parking in your yard, so we can't have to do that. There's some other things with situations like that too, like that would be like an attractive nuisance, it's a danger.
Absolutely, it falls back into the news, more the nuisance than the standard trapping.
Question I have, um, I don't. When, when moving to or from a residence to, to get a, an inspection, that's, that seems excessive. That, that if my moving, uh, like, uh, when moving to or from a residence, that exceptions two and three, granted. Only after the code enforcement official or designated personally inspected said property. I, I think that's much, uh, not my. Moving then is parked out in front of my car, out in front of the house for a period of time, then it becomes a nuisance. But I mean, I think, to, to, to come in and get a, an inspection so that I can move into my house seems.
Chuck, would a good compromise be that a vehicle cannot be parked in the yard longer than, like, four or six hours or something like that?
Uh, well, I, if you have movers that can empty a truck in four hours, I would be interested in contracting with them. I, I, I wanna find a compromise with it, um. So we can say a reasonable amount of time, well then you can argue that seven days is a reasonable amount of time to have my moving truck here. Um, I, I do think that having some language would be good to have, I don't know what that timeframe would be.
Twenty-four hours? What about actively moving to and from a residence? So then, what I mean is, I'm not parking my, you know, um. U-Haul type truck that I got, you know, somewhere and said, oh, well, I'm moving, I, I just, there, there's certain people, certain citizens that I think would take. That I can't even think of that I've dealt with before, that would use it, oh, well, I was parking the yard, tell you I'm moving, well, when are you moving? I would say maybe actively moving to and from a residence, so if I am moving and it does take six hours for me to load stuff. Or I'm taking things apart and loading it, then I'm not having, you know, Benny coming going, oh, now you gotta move, um, cause I'm actively engaging in it.
And I think it gets tough when you start putting timelines on, because we don't know when the time started and where. We see. I, I think it.
Well, you didn't see me move it.
Yeah.
I, I know you saw it here at ten this morning, you didn't see me move it at noon, and now you're back at eight o'clock at night, same place. Definitely, so actively in the process of moving, actually, is that, would that be a place to start?
Um, yeah, perhaps, I, I agree with you, I don't, I think it's cumbersome to ask somebody to come in. But if they're like actively loading a washing machine for six days, that's an issue.
Well, yeah, no, I don't think they're actively doing it, you know, like, if you guys come by and go, hey, we noticed you parked in the yard, yeah, man, I'm, I'm loading and loading stuff. Then you're actively doing it, if I park it there, I'm like, yep, I gotta unload this dishwasher, yeah, and then six days later, it's still there. You're not actively doing that, so maybe we need to put in a definition of actively, if need be.
I'll leave that to the attorney to craft.
I can think of a good definition.
Also, Mary, I guess, inviting welcome to town if we're citing.
May not honestly be.
In the, uh, in the adaptation of this code, it says, uh, the code enforcement official or is designated as authorized. To immediately use the citation for all violations of this article. Initially, are we starting out with a, a warning as the word is getting out to people, um, since this is like, there, there, a lot. It's gonna require a lot of, um, effort by a lot of residents to make these things happen.
I think it's, it's reasonable for us to issue warnings for a while, I'm just gonna get people used to, make sure that we're publicizing it, talking about it, that sort of thing.
Would it, and I'm, I'm real eager for this to gain traction, um. Would it, would it make sense to say that this goes into effect at X date? So that people have a reasonable amount of time to. To research and process what would be the best solution for them to address this issue without knowing that they're. That starting now, I'm, I'm currently in violation, even if I'm in the process of this, and knowing that this is a fairly significant change. I think a positive one, that we give people a, a period of time with which to complete that work.
So let's say that we made it effective six months from now, that would put us around the August, September timeframe. If we did that, then would you still proceed with warnings to start? Or would we just work on publicizing this now to say that this is gonna go into effect six months from now, so we need to have a solution ready to go?
I, I think education is better, um, I, 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 I know that this is going to be a challenge. Uh, for a lot of folks who, who may not be as excited, uh, about it as, as others are. And so I think to come out of a gate with a warning can be perhaps a bit off-putting, and I, and I think I'd, I'd rather. Uh, be cordial and engaging, uh, on this and with that educational period of time, I, I think. Right now, it'd be pretty difficult to make this happen with their current weather, and so I would, I would suggest giving. All of the potential workable weather time as that frame, and so maybe we're looking at January first, uh, the twenty-sixth. To where you, you have now nine months of, of workable timeframe, um, to, to make this happen. I, I think September would be fine, I think six months would be fine, but, but then maybe we still have an opportunity, September, October, November. To complete the project before it goes into effect.
And then not require the warnings then, because we've given the extra, longer amount of time.
Done the education and publication in advance and study.
Either that or give them six months and then give them warnings for.
I think, yeah, I'm just dealing on the other side, um. It, they'll, it's going to be, so, the, the, the issue is going to be, so if we're gonna give you this much time to be educated and then we're gonna give you a warning. This is just, then they're gonna look at it as, oh, so I don't really have six months, I've got eight months then. Just start writing tickets, um, because it's just. I can just say, I mean, they, they, they will understand, they will know, maybe if we see them out and about, you know. I've got a few folks, I might just let them know, hey, if you stop parking all those in your yard, um, and just let, you know, and just. So if we see folks, maybe we can let them know, hey, you know, we can post it, we can put it in different things, but I think after that time. There's no need for a warning, I mean, you know, maybe somebody new to town or something, fine, but most of, most of these issues are folks who've been here for quite a while.
Yeah, I think, I think if we, if we provide the time to complete the project, then at, at the point at which the ordinance goes into effect. We have an actionable item.
What other questions or parts of this would you have concerns with, or anything that you see needs to be added to it?
I've heard su- support, that, that, I think, people are, are looking to have. To where they don't have to be the bad guy, uh, but are really frustrated with. Seeing this happen.
I think it's important in the education piece of it to e- express why, um. I mean, as far as like, you know, driving over the curbs, that damages the curbs, which in turn eventually damages the road. And not all of those, obviously, are in pristine condition, but as we look to improve our infrastructure, you know, we wanna make sure that we're focusing on. Doing everything that we, we can and having residents do what they can, so that we can all support that together. As well as, you know, like. As well as, you know, like dirt and other things washing out of, you know, during rains and stuff because of parking on those surfaces potentially. And is there, I mean, as far as making sure, so I could call. And have a dump truck loaded of rock dump, but is that, you know, is it? Done correctly, is it actually the surface that, you know what I mean, like how, how to combat, is there language in place and did I, did I miss that?
There is, so, um, under nineteen four oh eight A toward the end of that paragraph. The improved surface as approved by the building inspector or city engineer. One of the things that, um, we're talking with Jason Johnson about is, uh, working on some standard details for us for public infrastructure, so this may be something you could talk to him about. Is what would that standard detail look like, and then as part of the education or publication, we could say, here's the ordinance or what's required. Here's some examples of what this might look like in picture form, people could see kind of what's expected.
I wonder if we might, um, move forward on this in the August timeframe, so it's not in the middle of winter and. I don't know, I don't know if that changes things or not, just it, it at least allows people to. Not be parking in their yards in snow and all that.
I would say by the first of September, maybe. Spring, summer, have it done.
I think my contractor wise, I don't know, like fizziness, but if somebody's gonna be, you know, if several people are lined up, um. Amongst a few concrete contractors to have that put down, um. I'm sure that could, or you know, may or may not be able to be done in that time lo- limit. And you wouldn't necessarily wanna put like an aggregate down just to be removed unless it was something that was gonna go underneath anyway.
It kind of makes sense, similar to what we did with the demo permits or the, the resolutions for Condon Nation today, they're visiting and actively engaged in the conversation with Bruno. For example, he knows where it's at, and so then it makes sense of, okay, we, we know that you're planning on making an approved surface, you're number four in line with the concrete contractor. They may not get to it, but keep in communication with us on where we're at, we're not gonna, if it doesn't get done by that certain date, but just. If, if they're making a diligent effort to pursue the improvement.
A lot of them will do aggregate rather than concrete because of the cost.
And are we requiring clean, like washed, clean rock? I think that would match the standard details that we're working on for the gravel streets that we've been talking about. So it would make sense to request that as well.
Does that work that I can do as an online, I mean, I'm not a contractor, can I, can I, could I complete this as a, a property owner?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, I've actually, we've done it, I've had people come in and say they want a place to park their RVs on their house and. You know, our parking reg's up, the, the, the specific wording in our parking reg is you can create a parking space, it's gotta be a. Dust-free, weather-resistant surface. And there's an argument on if wash gravel. Your gravel road in the country is a weather-resistant surface, but it's not dust-free, but it's wash gravel, a dust-free surface. There's an argument, I mean, that I've got notes in my own regs to address that and see if we needed to find out a little truer because. If you, if you require a hard asphalt paving or concrete paving, then it's just, the, the price is gone. I mean, you can't get asphalt for one thing, and you can't get it on a small batch. Unless you happen to luck out and the asphalt companies here are doing a couple streets in town. And they're willing to put some in your driveway for a small D or something, or one of these companies that comes through, you know, and puts down two inches. And then when the weeds start going through, you hire them to come back and put down two more inches. So you're fortunate with the concrete. So to me, if they got a good clean gravel and they keep it maintained and they thicken enough and compact it enough, it. It can meet that requirement, I believe, but. Best example I can give is, uh, Marina Warens. They just renewed their whole parking lot and never said a beep to me and they put down gravel and chips and it looks like what we do with our streets in some cases. That's a weather-resistant, dust-free surface, but it's not concrete, it's not really asphalt, it's not. At some point, it's gonna start loosening up and it'll wash into our ditches and. But so does chunks of asphalt and concrete and asphalt chips are the worst, shame to tell you that.
Yeah, they're terrible. I, I wanted to be something that's accessible, something that is, is manageable to complete. Because that's, that's really our.
We need wash gravel for something like that, but another thing, my personal example. I've probably had four or five semi loads to put on my hill, on my driveway. And I can't wait to put concrete down, but.
You know, homeowners are doing that, they have to dig it out either with a shovel or a skid loader. Seven inches deep, and I would think a minimum, I mean, it would need to be four or six, shame. Minimum or probably preferably six-ish.
Probably six.
Um, you dig it, dig it out and put in the rock and level it all. And yes, a homeowner could do that if they have the tools to do it or the labor ability to do it. And I mean, even like, and you have the rock delivered, depending on where it's at, it can dump out of the end load like this, and so then you just have to. Depending on where it's at, I mean, it can be simple depending on the location.
And the ability to compact it.
Right, you know, compacting it would be like probably the next thing that, I mean, you'd maybe have to rent, to do that, but again, possible.
Wouldn't necessarily depend on the location, wouldn't necessarily, if it's a place where somebody's been using. Regularly heading anywhere to make it, there's any material there, you may not have to dig it out, just add your layer on top. You got it humped up a little bit, it can drain off, or when we're on great problems, you know, with the drainage. And you can still approach it correctly. You may not have to get the steel chair out of the shovel.
Well, my next question is, there's nothing else involved with this specifically is, do we want a motion on this this evening so that it can be? Go into effect or we, we need the new language added into it prior to making that motion?
I would, I would think, let's, let's clean it up a bit. If, if it is gonna be going into effect at some point this fall, then, then we. We have the time to do that, um, we can. It'll be discussed, um, and so that we can start that in, in formal educational opportunities and. Quite by the ordinance, I'll be ready for next meeting, need two meetings.
So, no motion needed there, and I will move on to reports, manager's report.
Mary Commissioners, we are working on the current FEMA forms to fill out to submit to the state for the emergency declaration that was made for this winter storm, the blizzard that happened earlier this month. Um, don't know what potential reimbursement looks like from that, that all the. Formal declarations are in place to make it eligible if we meet a certain uh cost threshold, we're still working through that piece of it. Um, Stacy's still diligently working with the state department, division of emergency management to get reimbursement from last January's winter storm. Um, as well, so it, it is a lengthy process. Uh, also you made notes when you walked in, there's a new sign up on the, um. Counters by the cashier station, and it's Lady Shirley's Society Papers, if you're familiar with the, uh, series of Richardson, it's kind of a spoof off of that. As, uh, put on by tourism partners, and the intent of these papers is to tell the story of. Cloud County and Concordia's history in a slightly different way that's intriguing, uh, enough that people get a taste of what happened or what the stories are. Want to learn more, so they may go visit, uh, the tourism office, they may go visit the museum or the brown brand or the orphan train or any of the other attractions that we have here, the W. Uh, museum, and then also let people know, um, a little bit about what's happening in the community and different events that are happening, but just kind of a slightly different way of telling stories that's kind of fun, so we could sometimes read those. If you have an opportunity, um, that's really all we have going on besides working on things like ordinances and enforcement and things of that nature, so happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Uh, staff reports?
Our bumper trucks sold appropriately yesterday for fifty thousand, and that is about as absolutely the best we could have expected, so. Awesome. Uh, second thing, I just wanna comment, um, I think it was last meeting or maybe the meeting before, I think Ashley had a comment about, uh, PPE that had been bought. Um, whether or not we had enough and, uh, we needed to buy anymore. Probably next time or the meeting after, uh, we'll, I'm looking at a grant right now through Safer, um. The Kansas State Firefighters Association is sponsoring one through Safer. Um, made a reimbursement grant for gear that we could buy and it has to be for new firefighters. Um, and new means anybody since, uh, November twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-three. Um, so we do have some individuals that I could, um, buy gear for potentially, um, I'm still waiting on a few more answers. Um, on some of the criteria of the grant, so the, the hospital is. Um, had to look into a bunch of physical, um, tests they would have to do. Um, so we would get a physical, uh, we would buy their gear, once we paid for it, we would submit for reimbursement. Um, so I do have, um, six individuals that would qualify for it and it would cover all but a hundred dollars. Uh, worth of, uh, the year for them, so the total amount would be, um, a little over four thousand dollars that they'll cover for us. Um, the other item, I believe you received an email, uh, last week, um, about Miltonville EMS. Um, they've been struggling for a number of years. Um, Blake Graham has called asking for help, um, to see what we can do. Uh, he is one of the city commissioners over there and is also on the EMS department. Um, they had a couple incidents, um, that had to be reported to the board of EMS. Um, or one that had to be reported, one was kind of a close call, but when you're reporting one thing, the other thing just looks like it's the same. Um, so they've reached out and said that, um, things are not looking good for them and they were wondering. About what it would cost and what it would take for us to take over a part of their area or all of their area. Um, I've talked with Ottawa County, um, Clay County and Clyde and us have all come up with a verbal agreement at this point. To automatically mutualize them, um, for every call they have, just to suffice any requirements that the board of EMS will have for them. Um, and have a verbal agreement right now, uh, next meeting, we should have a true written agreement for you guys to take action on if you choose to. Um, and then, once that's completed, we'll be able to, um, also look at a permanent. Solution for the problem down there, um, ideally that will involve all four of the already mentioned services, um, divying it up. Um, everybody kind of take part of the load, um, but in the end it comes down to about those townships wanting. Um, and I'm not willing to just say no to them, um, we have the ability to help, so. We've got a lot of work to do there before we're ready for anything, just wanted to let you know what we're looking at. Uh, yeah, Monday, we're gonna go talk to county commissioners, get their thoughts, ideas on it. Um, I know a couple of them are okay with like a countywide type ambulance service. Whether or not that's truly necessary at this point, we'll kind of see what happens with, with everything in Miltonville first, so.
Are you able to meet response times from this location down to there?
So the state doesn't really have any requirement on the amount of time that it takes you to respond to the residents. They do require an average of five minutes responding from your, out of your station. Um, so it doesn't necessarily matter if it's a block away or forty-five, sixty miles away. Gone en route within five minutes on the average, that's the only requirement. Um, but there's parts of their ambulance district that is every bit of forty minutes from here, and that's not doable. For us, and that's why we contacted Clay County and Ottawa County to make them a part of the conversation. Any other questions?
So they kind of go in hand with the response time down there, um, I'm excited to say that one of our dispatchers just got enrolled in. Medical dispatching, um, we're gonna require the other five to get medical dispatching as well, but we're excited to be able to add that. Um, service to the citizens of Cloud County and to Concordia, that what it does is it allows. If someone calls in and says, hey, little Johnny's not breathing, we will walk them through CPR until EMS gets there, or if they're having a baby or whatever. It's a flash card system that goes through all the proceed, procedures for the dispatcher to talk to. Some from the other line to help them walk them through until, um, EMS gets there. Um, it's a forty-hour course, um, we have one dispatcher currently enrolled in it, um, she's just started, so. We're kind of testing the waters a little bit, but I'm excited to hopefully add that service to our dispatching. So, it's about to look good, oh, we did get our new car, it's in service, we got it labeled up, it looks sharp and. We're excited to have it in our fleet.
This can be asked, Bruno, what's, uh, what's our ordinance about semi cabs being parked in yards?
You can park it at a residence and you can drive on streets to park it at a residence overnight, but it's gotta be legally parked. But you can't park it in the street, you can't park it in the street.
Okay.
You can't, uh, it's the same as anything else, you can't put it on the grass, but we have us, uh, I wrote the owner a letter. Elmer's? Yeah, well, that one, our new ordinance can catch it. Because it's on the grass, right, right on grass and just jumping the curb, yeah.
And Bruno, they're, they're pu- they're pulling onto the triangle and breaking up that curb, and now that there's snow and mud, you can see that they're making tracks in that. Triangle, that really needs to be addressed.
Yeah, that's. All that damage wasn't just created, but that, that's like, it's kind of a wet area right there.
Yeah.
We've had some, we've had some issues with washing out material from cracking curb and stuff there. But that doesn't help, that's for sure, that does not help.
Could that be potentially remedied by just sharing, like, the loc- like, don't we have a location for trucks to be able to be parked, so?
But I think they're all, you, or they, we have a place where somebody can park, that the city provides, but.
Right.
But yeah, they, they could definitely park right in their concrete driveway if they wanted to, but. Uh, that would be legal if it was off the street, so, but on the grass and jumping the curb, no. But semis are allowed to park in residences. Not on the street, and there are a couple of things. Public streets are exactly, your qualifiers, your major, uh, collectors or major.
I've asked then, can we put an ordinance in place that would immediately address a semi parking and not like, is that something that we could take action on? Sooner, faster than residential vehicle or non-semi vehicles?
Let us go back and review what exactly we've got, like, just to see if there's something that we can use immediately.
Because I think that's, that's something that doesn't necessarily require the time or the nuance of a personal vehicle. Because I think that's, that's something that doesn't necessarily require the time or the nuance of a personal vehicle.
The other difference too is um, I just, you know, having living, living in the neighborhood, folks um, complain that that they have to get that started, that truck revved up and started. So it's an incredible, it's, it's, it's much louder than uh, warming up a normal vehicle and much longer.
You can get well, back in the day, they've got a few complaints about it. Few of them issues too, when you fire one of them off it below zero and let it run for forty minutes to warm it up before you head out on the road to do your over the road driving. It can be an issue. I've had those complaints over the years.
Another comment I would make is that for that brief moment in time, a couple of days ago, when spring made its the park was full, people were walking, it was really nice and then it went away. But it's, it's nice to see folks starting to come out that they are willing to. And so again, the promise that they will again get another call. It's nice to see our community engaged.
Commissioner Hatchison, do you have anything?
Um, thank you for allowing me to meet with you all with, by Zoom tonight. Um, the one comment I had is for John. I liked um, at the bottom of the report for EMS and fire right now, it's stating what the average is. I don't know if that's new, but maybe I just newly saw it. I think that's nice for our community to understand how many calls a day you guys take.
I'd move to adjourn.
Second, we have a motion, my commissioner Lambert, second by commissioner wants to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Right, aye.
All votes in fine, motion passes, meeting adjourned.